All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:35. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, equal and just.
All right, let's do, um, roll call, we'll start over here.
Randy Pelletier.
Jason Harris.
Jake Fitzpatrick.
Karen Harry Tonoff.
Eunice Landry.
Zeb Roger.
Heidi Dufer.
Eliza Drule.
Anne Hears.
All right, before we go any further in the meeting, um, just a couple of things from the chair, um, when we go through and redo our agenda review, uh, if there's an item on there that you're not familiar with, just make that known, and then when we actually get to that item on the agenda, somebody can explain, you know, what we're doing. For example, the, when we were talking about the scholarship, so, um, I just think that would help as we go through the, the meeting, if we all understand where somebody needs some additional information. Also, I would like to request that we have motions on items before we enter into discussion. And also, I am requesting that all actions be, be taken in public, even though we may have had a discussion non-public, but when we come out, we'll take the action in public. All right, having said that, I'm gonna, anybody have any questions on those three little things? Okay, I'll now open up public input. If you have a complaint and it's about a particular person, it would be something that we would not want to do, um, respectfully in a non-public session, and you'd prob, you would want to be requesting a hearing from the chair.
Okay. I'm just not having a lot of time for that. No, I'm hoping that now we're not hearing, we need to get a proposal and we want to use action.
We'd have to schedule the hearing, if that's what you're requesting. Um, you know, I-
I'm requesting that school hear my case, my consent, and my standing in my status of honor, and my question on the board, through my side.
All right, we, we would have to actually schedule the hearing.
That one, it's not a question of any? That's, that's what's been called, that's on here, I'm just trying to find out what, what you like to do.
Are you requesting having a hearing?
Yes.
Okay, then we will schedule one for you. Do you have anything else for public input? Okay, I'm now gonna close public input, and, um, I'll take a motion on the agenda review.
I make a motion to your agenda.
I'd like to discuss staff recognition following COVID, as far as maybe, um, well, we can discuss one of those.
Do you want it under action, or?
Same way you think, whether it be under action or installation.
As part of the personnel section for under.
For.
And we have to, um, we actually have to add another item under personnel report, and that would be a sabbatical leave. Any other discussion? All in, all those in favor of the, the agenda is adjusted?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes of the board, what you want.
Sorry, I got it written down.
Well, I have a small revision to recommend, it's on page three, um, the last two items under C aren't personnel, so that should just have a different heading, um, for the assessment and the bid for auditing. Just to make those clear, they're not personnel. And also on page five, um, the motion that related to the central office staff, um, and it's recorded here as starting salary, um, but I think the way we described that in the meeting, um, was that it was the starting salary for the position, um, the new positions with regard to experience and years of service, so I just don't want that to be interpreted as like a starting salary without regard to who was in a position. And we had discussed that in the meeting.
Between Sharon and, and Superintendent, do you have those changes? Do you have those changes?
I will get them off the report.
Okay.
Should be okay on the report.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of the minutes as revised?
Aye.
Obsteing.
Obsteing.
So we had two, two extensions? Thank you. All right, um, our student rapport. Don't you? All right, then we'll go right on to Jay.
I'm corresponding with Justin, actually, he's, uh, he's at home, he didn't realize that there was not a, an online option for tonight, so, um, Justin's been remote for the past couple of months as well, so, um, he wanted me to pass along to, uh, the seniors have some big things to look forward to, um, Sprint of Carnival was a big success, this was the combination of winter carnival that took place in the spring, it was, um, just, at this point, I didn't know, a week ago, two weeks ago, sometime recent, um, it was great, it was actually the first time we've had all the kids together, we put them outside on the bleachers, uh, separated them by class, uh, and then we used the entire campus outdoor, uh, from the softball field all the way to, uh, stuff happening inside the classroom, uh, so it was cool, it was a really cool event, it was great to have, um, like I said, it's been quite some time since we've been able to do that, so, kids enjoyed it, uh, spawned some ideas for the future as to, you know, do we want to get away from that, uh, day before February break doing winter carnival and cramming everything inside, or do we want to start exploring the option of, of using spring, so, it'll be interesting to see how that goes. Um, Justin has said that this, uh, few of the seniors are feeling stressed out about grades closing on Friday while they're still getting assignments this week, um, part of that is my fault, uh, guys' teachers not to bone it in and, and to really work until the end, um, I'm confident that, that senior teachers are not overwhelming students in the sense of, of assigning eight-page research papers today that are due by Friday, if an eight-page research paper was assigned, I'm confident that it was assigned a couple of weeks ago with a due date of this week. Um, and he said that clubs are looking, um, to next year and, and they're beginning the electing of new officer process, um, so then transferring to, um, some of the things that are going on, I mean, school is, it's, it's very busy, um, at this point, um, we're planning, um, a lot of the end of the year activities, I think I alluded to that at the last meeting, uh, tomorrow night, we do have an eighth grade information, I decided to put that on, on the calendar, thought it was important, uh, we missed out on it last year, so this year's freshman class did not get the opportunity to come toward the school, meet teachers, um, and so we're gonna do it tomorrow night, um, we typically give students their schedules and allow them to walk around to meet teachers, um, who they will have, uh, we're gonna do a little bit different, uh, since we don't have the schedules, we're just going to say, here are the potential eighth grade teachers that you have, um, and so go around and meet all of them, just in case, so there's, there's two, uh, teachers for each core discipline, uh, you know, my freshman team, uh, and then of course, all of the electives from woodshop to PE to big shop, computers, music class, all of those teachers are on standby as well, ready to meet kids who might be taking those classes as electives.
I just wanna clarify, tomorrow night or Thursday night?
Thursday night, I'm sorry, Thursday night, you're correct.
Yeah, well, I thought it said the third out there.
It is Thursday night, I, I generated an email earlier and I was using tomorrow night, and it is Thursday night, thank you. Um, Senior Day, we're, we're working on a Senior Day, this is, uh, we're gonna have seniors in for that, the one day, uh, next Wednesday, uh, we're gonna go over, through everything from rehearsal to awards to the senior cookout, um, all while trying to do the regular school day as well on Wednesday, so, um, still being planned, um, underclassman award ceremony also still being planned, as is graduation, we, we're, we're making great strides and have a lot of logistic planned, uh, a lot, a lot of logistics planned at this point, but, uh, there's just a lot of unknowns that we're, we're stumbling upon as we, we come across, so, um, but everything is moving the way it should, and, and I'm confident everything's gonna work out well, and some of us will, um, have more gray hair when all is said and done, but you can always die, Jason, yeah.
Okay, is there been a decision between Park and Law?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, um, we are doing the graduation ceremony on the front soccer field, um, I don't know, you're not gonna be able to see it from here, um, if you were able to get out there during light, you'll see, what we did is marked off eight by eight sections, uh, on the field, and so there'll be, I think we have, um, six or seven rows with about fifteen sections in each row, so this year, rather than it being open admission, go wherever you want, there's assigned seating, um, in, in, by row and by section. The kids will be on the track, um, facing the bleachers, the bleachers actually will remain open, um, parents, uh, and family members, whatever the bubble is for that eight by eight pond, will be on the soccer field itself, once kids get called up for their diploma, they'll come across a stage that is set up on, on the, uh, track, um, then they'll get their diploma and they'll go sit on the bleachers, um, and so once everybody has their diploma, they'll sit on the bleachers, uh, people can get pictures of them as a class, the class president will lead them in a tassel turn and throwing their caps, and so we'll get all of the traditional, uh, things that, that people seem to enjoy at graduation, um, and, and like I said, it's, it's, everything's working, uh, we're running into a few hiccups as we were expecting, and we're obviously not gonna make everyone happy with all of our decisions, but that's par for the course. So, and the last thing that I will mention, we are putting together a video, uh, for the senior awards video, uh, which we will release next Wednesday, um, we'll also recognize the recipients at the graduation ceremony, um, but specific to the award ceremony, we do need a member of the school board to record something for the, uh, more reindeer's Patrick Memorial Scholarship, so if you are willing, able, interested, um, please let me know. You don't have to do it right now, you can message me privately later.
I did it last year.
Uh, I, I will also say, Eunice, um, y, you are slated to speak at this year's graduation, um, should you choose not to, we'll have to find a replacement, but I would encourage you to do so, you've done a wonderful job every time you've done it. No pressure, though.
I'll talk to you later.
Fair enough.
What about prom?
Um, prom is this Saturday, um, I, I, I don't know how it's going, um, I, I've removed myself, uh, from the process for a variety of reasons, um, they seem to have sold out, I think they're at a hundred and seventy-five tickets, um, Tim has been working with, uh, the class advisors and gun stock to put things in place, um, in terms of, um, safety and, and, and what have you, um, so they are planning on doing a senior march here, again, I, I don't know what that looks like, um, I, I, I did offer to help out with that part, um, but I was told that they have it under control, so. That's a good thing.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, we'll move on to the Superintendent.
Uh, so, my report is in your packet, um, on health and safety, I don't have to read that to you, um, things have continued to change as we've gone, as they have all year, we have been following the, just, all right, um, we've been following the athletic associations, um, outdoor sports guidance since they adopted the National Federation of High Schools, um, coronavirus mitigation, um, protocols a few weeks ago, so going into the postseason, players on the field are not required to wear face covering, as players in dugouts on benches side by side still are, um, beyond that, we're, we're still doing the same things within the building that we've been doing all year, the only proposal I have for you to consider tonight is with regards to the morning, um, convenient MD online screening, um, it's not as big a deal at the high school level because the kids do it themselves, and they just show Jay or somebody else their phones with their little, um, period for the day, hearing screen on their way in the door, at the younger levels, it's been, it's become a struggle as the years gone on, more and more families aren't doing it, and that occupies a lot of diverse times anymore, so for consistency's sake, if you want to, um, remove that requirement, you could remove that requirement, that's my recommendation, my other recommendation here, it's under action items as well for you tonight, um, it's not a major change, but it's an exercise that we're going through every day, it doesn't change that anybody with symptoms shouldn't be here, and if somebody would, and we would continue to send that message, that people who are symptomatic shouldn't come to the building, and if somebody is in the building exhibiting symptoms of potentially coronavirus, they'll be detected.
Do you want us to wait until we get to the action item?
You can share.
Well, Jason over there is ready for-
I, let's go here, that one. I make a motion if the, uh, I still stop using the, uh, screen tool.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Thank you.
Uh, on plans for the summer, uh, what I just handed out, um, is, uh, an initial draft of what we're trying to put together for enrichment programs, these would be primarily S R two federal grant funded, uh, this week's tasks are listed at the bottom, the finalized budgets, developed emotional materials, here are what, um, criteria will be for selecting students to participate, and then, um, my office needs to complete writing the grant activity, the amount of money we have left, maybe S R two grant, which we're gonna get to, uh, shortly, that point next, pretty soon, uh, is about the amount of money I think this is going to cost, so it seems to be falling into place, this gives you an idea what some of the activities might be, highlights include the trip to Gettysburg that the AP US History class runs every year, wasn't able to go, so they would leave on the eighteenth, the day after the teacher's last day here, and go for that long weekend and have that trip, um, normally that costs the students, in addition to their own food, a little bit more money, but because of the grant support available to us, unless you object, this year you can make that completely cost free to students, um, you can read the others, see, there are a couple other things that I think are particularly cool, I think in New Hampshire, it's always popular with students to go get some, um, outdoor survival and safety training from the Appalachian Mountain Club, I'm sure there will be a lot of interest in that, and right above that on the list, there's a class called Sustain Glass Geometry, this gentleman is a stained glass artist who works with student groups to design and create pieces that then stay permanently in the schools, so maybe hanging right here, if all goes well, when this is all over, um, his website is sustainglassgeometry.com, and it's worth thinking about, it's pretty cool stuff, um, so, we have the grant support, um, a portion of S R two is required by the federal legislation, can be used to, uh, address learning loss due to the pandemic, you can define that any way you want, but I think that these proposed activities give you an idea how we're defining it, has a lot more to do with establishing connection with, and it does get standardized test scores on after school, too.
Did anyone bring to your attention that the Gettysburg campus was closed during the big dance reciting, you know?
I hadn't heard that.
Yeah, I've heard the drumrollings that were still, I haven't seen that, well, because those, those kids are committed, they have to stay for the dance recital, so they're playing, so it's just something to look about.
Something we can talk about.
Yeah, I hope that you've seen it, uh, my kid helped me with that trip, too, during the pandemic, I mean, it's been a few years, but I hope that they will have the opportunity to go in next year, if that's a good idea. It's very short, I believe, as long as it's not scheduled for the dance recital, I'd say, yeah, and that's like culminating year or-
It's normally during the school year.
Yeah.
Jay, when they do it during the school year, it's always the same time, isn't it?
Uh, it's relative, it's usually the same month, but the week can differ.
We would anticipate going back to that regular practice next year.
It's a great friend, my friend on the ticket, so a lot of my-
I'll share the services, I can answer questions, but I think I bulleted out what's going on in my report, um, enrollment options, um, I would say of the two communities we've been in touch with this year, um, there has not been a lot of recent contact with one, um, although I understand their community is still doing its work, the other, um, for those of you on that committee, if you would like to take a look before you leave tonight, I have, um, a draft, academic materials that I would, um, try to deliver to them tomorrow, but you can take a look at it if you want, pass it around, or I can save it for you. It, you've seen, you've seen all these words and pictures before, um, except some of the numbers, and names of towns have changed, um, so yes, it's very similar to things you've seen before. Future topics, I included as a sort of bulleted list at the end of my report, uh, so you know that we continue to talk about community service options through the pandemic, as Jake, as administrator, brought up earlier, in the year, it's been a little more challenges, tips throughout beneath their obligation as a graduation requirement, so whether or not that wants to continue is an open question, uh, we're going to talk more later, as you did at your last meeting, about the master schedule, and how we might want to approach that collaboratively with, um, all stakeholders, teachers, students, parents, and others, and the third one goes to a five-year increase every year in interest in inclusion technology sector, among prospect mountain students, um, we have more students interested in LRTC programs than the joint board is budgeting for every year, there's more than one way to address that, one would be to increase that budget, that's not what this refers to, another way would be to bring more career connected programs to this program, it's a future item, I just wanted to plant that seed now, so that the next time we're talking about it, you won't say, I've never heard you plant it.
I think one of the problems with the late region also is that we have so many seats, but they only accept so many students in each program, so if we have more students in one particular program than we have seats, you know, they don't all make it, where we have other programs where there's less interest than the number of seats that we have. Great. Thank you for that update, um, finance committee?
So, finance committee met this evening, um, and first on the list on the agenda is the end of year financial position, um, you'll notice that there's not something in your packet that's on that yet, and that's because Heidi's still working on the final numbers, but we could say it is probably in the window between five hundred and five hundred and seventy is reasonable to say, um, so if we have a meeting, as Tim is going to propose, at the end of June, um, we'll have some tighter numbers for that to discuss, and also, um, some proposals, um, for how to use some of those, um, year-end fund balances. Um, the grants overview is in your packet, Tim, did you wanna cover anything specifically on that?
If there are questions, I can certainly answer them, it's in the board packet that you received prior to the meeting, and my main goal was to describe what federal coronavirus relief has looked like this year and will look like into the future, I would note that S R three, which is the last in the chart of these grants, um, can be spent through September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, it's not a race, there's time to be thoughtful and make sure that you're using this money responsibly, um, but there are also already some ideas on the page that you can leave, I think I can click on.
So the next item, allocation of special education legal costs, um, so for legal costs, um, which is budgeted under the school board, we are beyond our legal budget, and the, the thing that would be normal to do would be to, um, take some of those costs which were for individual students, um, from, and build a particular district, particular town that related to those legal costs, um, this hasn't been done in the past, as far as I understand, um, but this is a circumstance that's bringing it up, um, that we need to have legal look at the memorandum of understanding really to lay out how we should handle that, um, but first, um, we need to accept, we need to discuss a motion, um, for Drummond, Woodson, and McMahon to look at this, um, and approve it without a conflict of interest because they represent both the joint board and the Alton Board, um, so I would like to make the motion that we allow Drummond, Woodson, and McMahon to review the men, memorandum of understanding between the Alton School District and the Prospect Mountain High School JMA relative to allocation of special education costs to issue a legal opinion in accordance therewith, and we specifically waive any potential conflict of interest associated with rendering such a legal opinion.
I'll second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
So for the next meeting, um, we'll have the opinion from that, um, on that subject. And the procedural guide for procurement, is that in the whole packet, is in your packet, and the main change, um, that we need to talk about is, um, increasing the, from five thousand to ten thousand, uh, basically that, um, level of when we need to go to a bid, when there are additional, um, steps in the procurement process, so that is really the only change here, um, we did discuss in finance, one other small change to one of the policies that will better coincide with this guideline, which will become an appendix to, um, other policies, so is that under action items, or do you want that changed now?
Okay.
So, with respect to the purchasing procedural guide, I'd like to make a motion that we increase the minimum level dollar value of procurement from five thousand to under ten thousand, um, to allow for this procedural guide, um, to take the steps as laid out in each procedure without going through a bid process.
Any discussion?
Just minor changes, something that, to point out, it's, it's a little trust, it's my fellow.
Yeah.
Yeah, he knows. We got it.
I have to write it in about thirty times.
I'm super supportive of it, because I think, uh, both of them asked, and it's just can't, it's a charade, it's just kind of caption, here's the employee, it takes so much energy, very time, um, is there anything in here about, uh, purchasing off a state contract, I know from anything, um, we could purchase off a mountain chief of state contract, or a national state procurement contract, and if you can make that justification, that just goes a long way to alleviating taxpayer worries that you're not getting the best right. that we're not getting the best, correct choice for our option. You know, usually available to most people.
If it does not refer to that, then it would be great.
How about your discussion?
Thank you.
So I just made a motion.
And we had a second. We had discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it? The Finance Committee?
Thank you. Building a ground?
We also met tonight. We talked through a number of items. Primarily that the backfields still don't have their electricity, but those steps are in place and should be done by the end of the month. So that will enable a number of things back there. Tim is also looking at, Tim and Tom are also looking at outdoor point of view wifi, since we can't run network cable through the conduit. There's no action there. So we have sort of two things. One is, Tim is looking at quotes for repaving the driveway with a couple of options. One being part of the driveway down to a certain level of edge, a piece of, after the track. And then the other would be all the way down to the stop sign. So he's looking for quotes, and we just wanted to get the feeling of the board, if this is something that he should move forward on, if there's any of your financial support issues.
One reason why I brought it up was, it's been brought by the professional members of the sub community members. And the road's already bent and it's done, fixed. Since original, it's chewed up at the bottom. It's a couple of things that would be done. They can grind up the bottom, use it as a base, which will bring the road up, and then maybe look at doing four inches on top. You know, obviously, we could still add some stuff to frost season, but overall, it'll take care of the road for another 17 years. So we call it, as our group, that would be a good idea. He wasn't mentioning just the track, and then others have brought up possibly the stop sign. Maybe from the school, maybe as our group, we'd like to look at two different quotes, one enough to give you a track is, and then a separate one, finishing all of it, and then we'll bring it back to the board and have a discussion on if we want to use some of the, the floor funds.
Tim would like to say, I'll make more of your guess.
Right. We're trying to schedule our next meeting for the 29th of June. Just to be able to handle incomers, because they have to be done before June, by June 30. So I'll just look for a consensus right now, because until we know, until we actually have gone out to bid and have a firm number, it would be hard to take any action. But consensus, does everybody agree this is something we should look at? Great. Thank you very much.
And then I have one more thing. We have bids on the replacing the Patrick School Board. So I don't know if we have the paperwork or not, but we're bringing forward. Bids came in from 21,000 to 29,000. We're bringing forward the middle number, which is $23,360, the date, I S and Associates have it nationally.
Is it a motion?
That is a motion.
I said it, you're a motion.
Are there any?
Throwing lumber from budget success. That's better. Yes.
Any discussion?
Just curious why we wouldn't consider the lower bid. Was there research to show that it was not as good quality? Or was there different things going into the scoreboard that?
And Kate, that's a vendor she works with a lot, and he likes the vendor, but if they're busy right now, he's really concerned about the ability to meet timelines right now. It's sort of based on things he cares for.
Yes, and it's equipment you might not be able to handle if you don't have a school. When the other company has the proper equipment, you probably have time to get done, and the time travel.
And that company makes good references for your children.
Are we upgrading, or are we replacing something that's broken?
Replacing the scoreboard, which is, I think, original, it isn't bad. I mean, it's meaning you can't read the numbers, or you can't read some of the numbers.
So is it replacing or upgrading? Yes, because it also would be, so you can see it, right? So it would be replaced and upgraded.
It's right down in the soccer games, and the sun hits a certain time, but it's not good at all. That's between 4:00 and 5:30, any time.
When it's going on.
And it moves that much. It's going at some point. Other than all that, it's great.
So they're going to use the lights to make it so it can be seen, it's going in the same location. It's a circle of the sun, and that is the lights. That's, that's in the file.
Yes, we have a motion and a second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Did you have anything else, Pam?
Unless it's, I don't think it's.
All right, we'll move on to the action items. And we've already taken action on item A. Yes, please.
So on the list of proposed summer enrichment activities, you might have noted there's a trip to the Appalachian Mountain Club. That would be an overnight trip, and also the trip to Gettysburg. That is both an out-of-state and an overnight trip. So I would ask that the board approve those tracks.
Make a motion to accept the overnight trip to Gettysburg and Appalachian Mountain.
Any discussion? I think it's a great opportunity, it's summertime for the kids. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. So we did, we've done the procedural guide. Do we do, we need to do the policy?
So you have, these are in the packet right now. All of your financial oversight policies are here for review, and three of them are here for proposed revision. First reading was last month with the budget finance committee. We have second reading this evening. Hey, do we talk about the change to each? It's a hot potato. D I H, Prohibition and Fiscal Management, this is relative to who signs the checks. Remember that one?
Yeah.
The proposal here that's been vetted by the Finance Committee is to change the policy to state that the treasurer signs the checks, because that's what actually happens here. The old policy said that some people signed the checks, which has never happened. But because it's the treasurer, it is still the case that you have appropriate fiscal oversight because you don't have the same person create the check and sign it. Treasurer, our definition, doesn't create the checks. That's the first one. Make a motion to accept policy D I H, Prohibition and Fiscal Management.
For first and final?
Second, final.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
D J, purchasing, did you want to hold on to this?
I believe so, yeah. We should wait.
So never mind. That's okay, you know? And on D J E, this is the policy that supports the procedural change to change the threshold between quotes and a sealed bid process from 5,000 to 10,000 dollars. So we did vote to accept that in the procedural guide, but it would be appropriate to do a final reading and approval of the change to policy D J E to make that change.
I move we approve the amendments to policy D J E, Prospect Mountain High School bidding requirements for final reading.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll now go on to the personnel report.
It's in the packet.
This one?
Which one?
Yeah, like this, there's a table on there. There's a personal recognition form, so this is a nomination.
Yeah, I don't have it.
It was just a handout.
I think this is two and three.
All right, so now we have the co-curricular and advisor nominations, and who is making this recommendation? Jay? Did you make this recommendation?
I did, so I suppose, I didn't know if I, it's never happened before.
All right, Jason, why don't you make a motion so we can?
I make a motion to submit the 421 co-curricular and advisor nominations.
You have a list of co-curricular positions. Tim had posted these, and these are the folks to date who have gotten back to me with interest in particular positions. I assume there will be others who are interested once they know if the club will actually exist based on student demand. And there are some things that are left blank because decisions have not been finalized yet regarding co-curricular positions.
Any questions or discussion from the board?
I just have a question. So if you can't, do we have a process in place if we can't fill some of these positions from staff to reach out to the community like we do for coaches for athletics?
Yeah, we never have. I shouldn't say we never have. We typically don't advertise out to the public for that, although we have had people step up and be co-advisors along with a staff member as well. But there, I don't think there's a policy in place that prevents an outside person from being an advisor of a co-curricular club.
Right, I wouldn't either. I'm just hoping that we do reach out to the community if we can't fill some of the positions. I mean, it looks like drama and acting and some other areas aren't covered. Yeah, just to make sure that we're reaching out to try to have those clubs available, not have them fall, by the way, because we don't have staff who want to take those.
We do end up having people, so this process is a little bit different than normal. Usually, I will go to people and say, "Hey, are you interested?" And can usually convince people to step up and do something. That process was changed this year. I did not reach out to anyone. So this is based on people who came forward and said, "I'm interested in doing these clubs." When we get to that point of wanting someone, and I get the blessing to go and assertive, I will.
So you're, so these, some of these clubs will still be advertised to students to try to get participation, even if you don't have someone filling a spot?
Yeah.
And then Jay will go twist some of these.
And just to speak to process a little bit attached to this list, you'll see the posting that went up. This ensures equitable opportunity for all staff. Everyone has now been formally notified that these opportunities exist. There are no secrets. Now that they have that notification, and some of these positions, nobody has applied for. Jay is pleased with his arms. And he can approach anybody he wants and try to get them to do these jobs, and I will never have to hear an employee say, "But I didn't know about that."
Yeah, I guess my point is, I just want to make sure we're recruiting for coaches or people to handle these clubs, just as we would for athletic positions.
I don't think we've ever had a co-curricular position not be covered. We've had clubs that have not run because there's no student demand, but if there's student demand, we cover it.
Thank you.
All right, so you did have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Make a motion for 421 fall coaches re-nominations.
I'd like to, do I have a second? I'd like to actually hold any discussion on the fall coaches. We can move that to non-public for discussion. And then I would, I'm actually going, so if we can do that, can we, can you withdraw your motion? And I would like to make a motion that we postpone the assignment of fall coaching nominations until our June meeting. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? All right, thank you. So we can, if there's discussion needed, we can move into non-public. All right, we also, in our packet, had varsity softball assistant? Just the fall? Yep. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Pam, you asked for staff recognition?
Yeah, and this could certainly move forward to the end of June, but I've been thinking a lot lately about everything that everybody's put in during the pandemic and hoping we could look at maybe a bonus or something for all staff from end of year fund. I'm going to bring this in, the motion forward, same idea forward, but also to try to, yeah, maybe. I just think it's something a lot of organizations are doing across the board. I just think everybody deserves a little recognition.
Tim said that it's be covered under the master. Bonuses related to performance during the pandemic are eligible for federal SRT. And I could take a lot of fund balance to figure out some of that.
The new idea is I'd like to spend time to, if everybody's available to move their cards, given.
apart, give them time to look at the details. Have other districts done this research, and we know kind of the ballpark and how it's going for future citizens?
I don't know of districts who are doing it. In my mind, it's, well, I don't even know what to say enough, because I don't think that would be fair to play that we're guys and, we need to figure out what we can do and.
Sure. I just was curious about the districts.
Okay, I'll do research, I have access to the members of the Superintendent's Association. I can get you a report.
My question is, would it be for all staff?
All staff.
Okay. So it's not just teachers, it would be?
Everybody.
No, I think that, that's, that's perfect, because, I mean, non-teaching positions have done a lot to get us through the pandemic. This part. So consensus? Everybody's support looking further at this?
Yes.
All right. I think you, you have support. All right, we also added to our agenda a request for sabbatical leave. So following my own, my, my own request, I'm gonna move that we grant a leave of absence to noting that there is no such benefit in the teachers' collective bargaining agreement to Vicky Sweeney, Sweetsie, sorry. Under leave, Ms. Sweetsie would not work for the SAU next year, she would not receive any pay or benefits. However, the Joint Board would assure her that she may return to the position, the same, the position, the same is substantially similar to the position she holds now for the '22, '23 school year, provided that that's confirmed by May 1st of 2022. She has not been guaranteed a sabbatical leave, but she would, so the whole compensation for that is part of the CBA. But she has not been guaranteed that, but she would still like to do the, the course, the training that she was planning on doing, and she's willing to do it without pay or benefits. So that's what my motion is requesting, that we allow her, even though it's not a CBA item, that she's willing to do this, and was her sabbatical leave request, it fits with that, so.
The only thing I'd like to add, Sweetsie, is if in the next three weeks, she does, what she's been waiting for is a position with a merit card, and due to the pandemic or whatever other reasons, it just hasn't happened, it hasn't happened, it hasn't happened. Remember to qualify for a sabbatical under the CBA, she needs that. So in the absence of that, she's already, she already asked you for an extension once, the deadline was in May, extended to today, June 1st. So now, she's asking you to consider allowing her to just go without a sabbatical, which comes with some pay, and she stays on her benefits. She's willing to forego that. If in the next few weeks she hears for a merit card, she'd love when you meet again, for you to restore the sabbatical, which would be great for her, but she wants to go either way. Yeah, for this. Jay and I both recommend this.
We had a group, I know, I did, yeah, before the pandemic.
Right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. All right, I'll now open up the second public input. Can you hear her?
Sorry, when I expect to hear about the communication.
I will meet with the superintendent, and we'll get, we should be able to get you a date this week. Any other public input? All right, I'm gonna close public input. Did you?
We're waiting.
Yes.
No.
No, we're waiting, that's, we're waiting for the.
All appointments are waiting.
Yeah, I postponed that. I took, I postponed all of the coaching nominations until.
I didn't know that was part of it.
Okay. Do you want to go into non-public session for discussion of the fall positions? We'll take a motion.
I move we enter non-public session under RSA 91-A colon 3 to A.
Ready?
I'm sorry, yes.
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 Okay, we are now in non-public session?